Okay, we have the time of 7:01. We're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Six fan. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mark, you wanna go ahead and call the roll?
Mr. Raymert.
Here.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
We are all present. This is a special meeting of the Germantownship Trustees. The purpose of the special meeting is to hold a public hearing for case number 2020-39-ZC filed by Germantownship Zoning for Kyle Brummett of 408 McClure Road, Lebanon, Ohio 45036. The subject property is parcel ID number D14009040053 located at the corner of Route 4 and EB Road. The parcel is currently split zoned A Agricultural and Residential 1. The applicant is seeking a change in zoning to Office Residential 1. If adopted by the Board of Trustees, the proposed zoning change will be effective in 30 days.
Okay, with that, the trustees will review this case, receive the testimony from the zoning inspector, the applicant, proponents, and the opponents, and render a decision for or against this request. The decision will be based on the following: the standards as they apply to the application, the staff report, the testimony heard during the public hearing, the recommendation by Montgomery County Planning Commission, and the recommendation by the Germantownship Zoning Commission. All testimony will be under oath. Everyone who wishes to speak during the public hearing, the zoning inspector, the applicant, the proponents, and opponents, will give their name and address and be sworn in before testifying. Once the public hearing is closed and the trustees begin deliberation, there will be no further public testimony unless the trustees have a question that needs to be answered. So when we ask if anyone wants to speak, we'll ask you to state your name and your address, as well as swearing to this oath, which is, "Do you solemnly swear to affirm that any testimony you shall give before the Board of Trustees during the public hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?" With that, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
A second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved.
Turn it over to the zoning inspector now for her report.
Alright, so you guys should all have a copy of this packet. On the front is the exhibit page. When you flip the page, exhibit A is my staff report. Applicant Kyle Brummett has applied for the zoning, rezoning of his property, parcel ID D14009040053. The property is currently split residential 1 and agricultural, and would like for it to be changed to OR 1. Please see the attached document titled "Brummett Zoning" for the current zoning. It is further back in the packet. It shows you the split. On the application, it states he would like to use the existing pole barn and property to operate their small private agency during regular business hours. This would consist of a few offices, three people maximum per day. There would be no increase in traffic volume as this business is not open to the public. They do not wish to expand their business on site as they say the property is not geographically capable of any additional structures. In addition to the zoning split, there is also a map that shows you the geography of the property. It also states the company is licensed through the Department of Public Safety and could potentially help deter any potential criminal activity. Directly surrounding this property are business for lots, agricultural, and residential districts. The general area of this property are other business districts and industrially zoned districts. You turn the page, you will see a copy of the application, as well as the affidavit, the property deed. I also include Article 17 of our resolution, which is the Office Residential 1, for your review. After that is Exhibit C, which is the letter from Montgomery County Planning Commission who recommended an approval. The next is a letter from the zoning commission who also recommended an approval. Exhibit E is a plot map to show the property. It was three parcels. They have now combined it into one. After that are miscellaneous maps of the property taken from the auditor site. Also included are the list of property owners within 300 foot that the notices were sent to, which is required by the ORC, including the letters that were sent to those property owners. And that is all.
Okay, at this time, I ask if the applicant has anything to say on their behalf?
Not as right now. I mean, pretty much everything's covered. Like we said, you know, it's going to just fall underneath business hours. No extra activity's gonna be displayed there at all. Right now, we're still in the process. We haven't done anything interior or anything like that to keep building or anything like that until everything got approved. Again, the firearm thing is out for sure permanently. Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I get you to state your name and address first?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Kyle Brummett. I live at 408 McClure Road, Lebanon, Ohio 45036.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear to or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Board of Trustees during the public hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'll start over since now I'm sworn in type deal. So, like we said, we have not built or anything additionally, or we're not going to. Just what's on the interior that will, if everything does go through, we will be building three offices. No additional traffic will be necessary there for, on our part. It's just going to be pretty much computers and so forth and paperwork that's going to be permitted inside the building. I know before, you know, with the range thing, that is permanently gone. We did pair up with Lake Bailey to do all our firearms courses and so forth, things that go into the firearm side of everything. So I just kinda wanted to clear that up as well, who we're using at this point, because we did get a full contract with him to get everything started.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're gonna open it up to anybody who is a proponent of the application being approved. If anybody would like to speak, please state your name and address, and we'll have you sworn in.
It looks like everybody listed on the call should be able to unmute if they wish to speak.
Okay, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like anybody is trying to speak. If so, go ahead and interrupt us. Otherwise, we're going to swap over. If there's anybody that is an opponent against this that wishes for the applicant, or the application to be denied, please state your name and address, and we'll swear you in. And I guess while we're waiting here, in case someone does want to speak, there was a couple emails that the township received on this case. And at this time, I don't see that person on the call. We're gonna ask that our fiscal officer, Mr. Heaton, go ahead and read those two emails, please.
Yes, we actually have received three emails from Candace Tate at 9391 EB Road. The first email came from her on November 16th. She essentially repeated that same email on December 25th, so I will not be reading the November 16th email. I just note that it did come in. On December 23rd, Ms. Tate sent in her second email, and, I'm sorry, December 22nd, she sent that email in. She said, "Hello, this is communication that my husband and I have had with ODOT regarding the property at the corner of EB Road. I wanted to forward to you so that this information could be discussed at the next meeting. Also, as far as letters go, could someone please let me know when they will need to be submitted before the next meeting? Thank you, Candy." And what she did is she forwarded an email from Doug dot Clark at DOT dot Ohio dot gov. That email came in on December 14th to Ms. Tate, and it reads as follows. "Mrs. Tate, after preliminary review concerning the potential commercial business to be constructed at 9391 EB Road in Montgomery County, at this time, ODOT recommends on waiting on the outcome of Township Trustees' decision of allowing this to move forward or not. If the Township approves this, the property owner, Kyle Brummett, will have to request a change of use drive access permit due to the property being potentially changed from residential to commercial drive. Since this location is at an intersection, and the property may potentially have higher traffic volumes, ODOT may require a traffic study for this location be completed by the property owner. Please keep ODOT advised of the outcome. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate in contacting me. Thank you, Doug. Douglas Clark, Permit Technician 2, ODOT District 7, 1001 St. Mary's Avenue, Sidney, Ohio 45365, 9374976904, DESK, and 9375393251, cell slash text, transportation dot Ohio dot gov." The final email that we received from Ms. Tate was dated December 24th, and it reads as follows. "To whom it may concern, I am contacting you regarding the request to rezone 9391 EB Road by Kyle Brummett. The current request is for an OR 1. Examples of an OR 1 are as follows: single-family dwelling, publicly-owned and operated buildings or facilities, public parks or playgrounds and community centers, adult family home. An adult family home, from what I have researched, would give the owner of the property the opportunity to care for up to six non-related disabled adults. Licensed residential facility with at least six but no more than eight people. The definition of a licensed residential facility means an institution, residence, or facility that is licensed by the Department of Mental Health and addiction services or provides care for children." (cough) Excuse me. Barbershop, one-chair operated, sole operator is the resident. Nursery or childcare center. Professional services, doctor's office, surgeons, dentist, lawyer, architect, engineers, insurance, and real estate agents, and members of similar professions. Rooming house. The definition of a rooming house is a private house in which rooms are rented for living or staying temporarily. When looking up local paren's rooming houses, close paren, the first one that the internet provided me was in the Happy Day Residence. (cough) Excuse me. I read the reviews, and one of them stated, "Great place to recover." Adult group home. Adult group homes, I didn't realize my video wasn't on. Adult group homes are for people who need room and board and may or may not need mental health, substance abuse, case management, and/or personal care services. People who reside in these homes can be adults or children with disabilities, substance use disorder, mental illness, or mental impairment, elderly, homeless, and/or previously incarcerated individuals be reintroduced into society. Now, I understand that Mr. Brummett is requesting the property rezoning to be used for his security company. Based off of the requirements listed on the Germantownship website, Blue Line Security does not fall within any of the categories. His business is not within the medical field. He is not an attorney or engineer. He is not selling insurance or homes, and a security company is not a similar profession to any of those. Blue Line Security has more than one individual working in their office. They previously mentioned three people working in the office. Also, they have several security officers that they have also said will be there from time to time, training, or for meetings. There has also previously been talk of a shooting range. If this rezoning is approved and this becomes private property, are the Blue Line Security Company employees able to utilize the shooting range without following the laws that are in place for shooting ranges? In the event that they are then, we need to question their proximity to the school and to coons. In addition to the shooting range, there had also been talk about holding CCW courses on the property. Is that legal? Is that something we want in our residential area? In the event that they are permitted to utilize the shooting range, we need to ask ourselves, would we allow this next door to Valley View High School? Blue Line Security was evicted from their previous location in Middletown due to refusing to stop providing clothes to the homeless. Apparently, they had turned the office into a clothing donation drop-off for the homeless. The space was rented, they, the space was rented, they were instructed by the landlord to stop, and they did not stop, therefore, they were evicted. Now, I am an advocate for helping others in need and doing what you can for others, so I am in no way using this example to say anything negative towards what they were doing, but what I am saying is that it is an example of non-compliance. My other concern is looking to the future in the event that Mr. Brummett would decide to sell the property. Once the property has been rezoned and purchased as an OR 1 property, that leaves the availability for anything listed to open without anyone being able to intervene. In the event that an adult group home wanting to reintroduce incarcerated individuals into society decided to purchase the property, that property, they would be able to operate there. Again, I am not against growth and business in Germantown. However, I feel that we have several locations throughout our community that are designated for business. I did not purchase my home and then petition the zoning board to open a Don's Pizza in my home. I purchased my home and property knowing that I am in a residential area, and my property is zoned residential. I would also like to address a couple comments that were made during the zoning board meeting. The statement was made that we live in a township and the shooting of guns is legal. While I agree with that, I feel that there is a difference in residential shooting and commercial shooting. We are talking about a business that has openly admitted that their intent is to have training courses for CCW and has held CCW courses on their property. There is also now a new structure that has been constructed in the valley portion area of the property. I also would like to state that I am in no way against people's rights to have firearms. Also, the statement was made that we cannot make decisions on quote, "what ifs," end quote, when in fact, this entire meeting is about quote, "what ifs," end quote. What if we decide to zone this property OR 1? In my letter, I have covered multiple quote, "what ifs," end quote, that could happen in the event the property is sold. Again, I would like to reiterate that I do not feel Blue Line Security falls within any of the professional service examples provided in Article 17, Section 1701, Section 1702, or Article 12, Section 1201. Thank you for your time and consideration, George and Candy Davis. And that concludes the emails that we received. Also, we offered the opportunity for residents to submit written letters. None were received by the township. Thank you.
Mr. Heaton, at this time, I'll leave it open for, you know, 30 seconds if there's anyone else that wants to speak against the application.
I would like to say something.
Please state your name and address, please.
Sandra Lehman, 9381 EB Road, Germantown.
Thank you, Sandra. Do you solemnly swear to affirm or affirm that any testimony you shall give before the Board of Trustees during the public hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, answer, I do.
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, I live down the lane from where his barn is, and my concern was about the shooting also. I have three kids, and I am a foster parent, so there are times I have, you know, four or five kids in my home that have to walk up and catch the buses, and there has been a lot of activity with cars in and out since they have bought the property. So those are my concerns about my kids walking up to get on the bus when we are back in session. Also, just the traffic and the noise, because I too bought my home, you know, to raise my family in, and we like the quietness, and, you know, all summer and spring, it was not quiet around here due to all the things going on up there. So that was one of my big concerns. Definitely, the shooting was a big one, but also just as the other person reminded us of what that zoning would be available to do with that property makes me feel uneasy.
Thank you, Sandra. One question before we move on to anybody else, just to follow up. You said it had been quiet until this summer. Can you give us some examples?
Um, well, just the flow of traffic, the flow of, you know, of working on the building. There were times we had to wait to get out of the lane for, you know, cars to move. It makes it a little bit more difficult, you know, for us. You know, we're typically the four houses that live down here, you know, we have our cars, but that's pretty much anybody that goes in and out of the lane. Well, it's been increased traffic, especially congested when you try to get out. Not all the time, but at some points. But still, I believe, you know, during the spring or summer, one of their kids had a, like a go-kart or something that was, you know, gas-powered, and it made a lot of noise. And my husband just passed away two weeks ago, but he was ill during that time, and it was very annoying for him when he was trying to, you know, rest and recuperate from chemotherapy. And not that they do that all the time, but I know that it was a thing in the summer, you know, for a couple times, you know, that they were out here. So just the added, you know, and being respectful of other people, you know, your neighbors, and things like that. When you bring a business in, you know, they're not like your neighbors, you know? So that's a huge concern of mine, being a homeowner down here.
Thank you for that testimony. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? At this time, we're going to potentially close the public hearing with a motion.
Am I allowed to re-speak? I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Brummett. Please state your name and address again.
Okay. Okay, it's Kyle Brummett, 408 McClure Road, Lebanon, Ohio 45036.
Just a reminder, you're still under oath.
Yes, correct. So the traffic that comes in and out, it's always been there, and it's always going to be there type deal, as far as people living back there coming to visit, because we still deal with a lot of traffic passing by and everything as well. My kids have not been out there for I don't know how long. When it comes down to that, the go-kart was only there one day. It's when it was their birthday, we had somewhere to ride it real quick until we moved into the house we are now located, where we're sitting on five acres where, you know, we do all our recreational shooting and stuff out here. I have plenty of land to do it on. And when it comes into loud noises or anything like that, you know, it comes down to whatever they're using to build. It's not so much... The only time we have actually more traffic is if they're coming to swap out vehicles to use our patrol vehicles to get to sites. And that's usually around nine o'clock at night. Our sites usually go from anywhere, it's always usually after nine. It's from 9 a.m. or 9 p.m. to 3 to 5 a.m. So it's always in the mornings, like early, or most, you know, security is done, performed throughout the night. So those are the only times we actually have people coming, and it's only two vehicles so it's, that are getting taken off of our property. So it's not a whole lot more traffic than what's already flowing through there. So I just kinda want to sum that up. And also, we were never evicted out of our last, we did cooperate. We came down to a resolution with ours, and then that's why we didn't buy the, we wasn't even moving the property until our lease was up in March. That's when we actually moved out. And I have paper and documentation to prove that, that we were in good standings when we left. We actually received almost half of our deposit back just due to renovating carpet, and that was it. So I just wanted to kinda clarify all that up, as far as that goes. It was a Christmas donation, is what it was.
Anyone else to speak? Okay. At this time, we're gonna close the public hearing, and the board will debate the merits of the case, and make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I ask a question real quick? Are questions to ask him?
No, we need to close the public.
Before we can ask questions? Okay. Thank you. Answer my question.
I'll make a motion to close. Okay. I'll second the motion. Mark, can you hear us? Mr. Heaton?
I can hear you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Make sure you move.
Yes, my question is for Mr. Brummett, and it was a comment made by a citizen that said that there was something constructed in the valley portion. Can you tell us about what was constructed in the valley portion?
Yes, we did get a permit for that.
No, nothing had been built, so.
Oh, yes, we just did a temporary permit. That was why we had the tractor out there. That is getting taken down. That was just to cover, to protect my tractor, is all it was, when we were actually, because I still gotta take it back up there and re-gravel the parking lot area, and that's what I had that out there, was for my mower and my box, my box blade to get everything, you know, to keep pretty much the land maintained without tearing up my tractor due to weather. It's just a carport, is all it was.
Okay.
I have one question, and I think it's just a clarification. You mentioned earlier about building three offices. I'm assuming that's in the existing structure?
Correct. It's gonna have, yeah, that's what I was saying, like, that's where we're, we're on pause right now until we kinda get this approved. But yes, everything, there's not gonna be any more exterior, and I think that has to come down. I think, I wanna say it's in, I'll have to double-check with zoning, but I think it has to come down by February. So that other carport building where I had the tractor at is getting taken back down and actually brought up out here where we could build actually back where we're living now.
Thank you. That was my question.
I don't have any specific questions, but I knew there was several things that I jotted down that I wanted to address to make sure, you know, the general public, you know, knew that we were hearing your concerns and addressing them. Number one, you- Number one, you guys had, had noted, um, the type of property, uh, and, and it being a residential area, so completely agree, uh, just to make everyone aware that this, this case was heard under a different, uh, zoning application a couple of months ago, and it was more of a commercial setting, and we did deny that, that application because we didn't feel that was right for the, the area. Uh, the OR one is the least intrusive of an office-type area that, or office-type zoning that you could possibly have. Um, both the county and, uh, our own zoning commission has, has recommended approval on that, so I just want to make you aware that we did address that or, or at least hear, um, that concern and, and have addressed it. Um, the, the shooting and noise, I know that's a, a large concern a lot of folks have had. Um, you know, I just want to point out in, in Section seventeen oh four of the OR one in, in Article seventeen of our, of our zoning, uh, resolution, Section B says, the office establishment, uh, must not create a nuisance from noise, smoke, or odor, and this has to be certified by the applicant to our zoning inspector. So essentially, Mr. Brummett has, has certified that, um, it will not be creating a nuisance from noise, smoke, or odor. I think the, uh, shooting range has been discussed ad nauseam, and, uh, you know, that, that's something that we have a limited amount of control of because it's a township address, um, not within city limits, but they cannot be creating noise. And, uh, I mean, Mr. Brummett, that, that's a, a message to you also that, you know, you are certifying that and making sure that you're aware that's one of the certifications you're making with this application. Um, another thing that we heard is, uh, there was an email from ODOT. Uh, unfortunately, we did not have the email that was sent to ODOT, so I did not have the background of what was explained to ODOT. I did hear ODOT's response, but, uh, I called ODOT today, uh, to speak to them directly to understand, um, what their perspective was on the traffic and, and what may have to happen. Um, in, in the long and short is that, uh, two things I'll say on this is, number one, um, if the property is a commercial property going forward and there's substantial traffic, uh, Mr. Brummett has to report that to ODOT, and, um, and as the ODOT email mentioned, you know, they want to stay abreast of it, so I'm sure someone who sent that email will continue to keep them up to speed with it. Uh, they would do a traffic study if they felt like traffic was dramatically changing in the area, and, and they would make Mr. Brummett, uh, you know, comply to any of the laws that Ohio Department of Transportation has. Um, it's a little bit outside of our purview. Now, what is within our purview is, it does say again in Article seventeen in our zoning, uh, resolution that this may not generate a great amount of traffic or noise. Again, back to the traffic and noise, Mr. Brummett has to certify again that he's not generating a great amount of traffic for us to, um, approve this. And so, obviously, anytime I would agree to this or, or recommend that we approve this, it would be on the basis that Mr. Brummett is going to comply with both of the Ohio Department of Transportation laws, other laws and regulations of the State of Ohio, and what's written in Article seventeen of our zoning resolution, which is limiting noise and traffic that could be generated by this property. Um, I think that's the, the main concerns, and hopefully, the, the township feels like we, we are addressing them and understanding and hearing what they're saying, but, um, with that in mind, uh, I feel satisfied with the facts that I've heard tonight.
I will add that when the zoning board approved this case, it was with the condition that there is no active firearm training. So when we approve, if we approve this tonight, uh, it, that's the same standard that is expected, that there will be no active firearm training at this property.
Yeah, it, and so, I think there, they would be allowed to shoot, right? We couldn't prohibit that, but just that they could not be creating a noise nuisance from doing active training on the property with firearms.
I believe the owners could shoot.
The owner can shoot, right.
But not, their employees could not shoot on the property, is my understanding of that.
Okay. I have no further questions.
I, I just have one more that kind of deals with the traffic that, uh, Mr. Raymert just spoke about. So you mentioned that there's going to be three employees there roughly. Are those employees, we, we call this a business, is there going to be people coming and stopping by to speak to the people? Is there going to be a sign-out front where people can just come and drop in? Or is this just three people taking calls?
This is three people at only office. The only other time more people will arrive is, like I said, if they're just swapping out patrol cars and leaving. Or swapping their personal vehicle with our work car.
You're not open for business at this location?
Correct. No, we, anytime we meet with clients, we actually go to them so that way we could see their properties or what needs to be, you know, addressed. And that way, we can write up a statement, then go back out there and advise that, see if they're pretty much satisfied with that. So we never have clients arrive at our business.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question. I think that will help clear maybe some of the traffic questions we had as well.
Yeah, the, the very last point is, is I know in the email, there was one other thing noting that it didn't specifically call out in the zoning resolution OR one about a, a security service. The only thing I'll say is just, the zoning resolution, if you read it, it's general for many reasons, because we can't list every possible situation, but I feel like the description of professional services, including but not limited to, and it goes on with physicians' offices, surgeons, dentists, lawyers, architects, engineers, insurance, uh, real estate agents, uh, a lot of these things, and even getting into, you know, barber and beauty shops, it's a pretty broad, um, OR one, uh, as far as a very small, limited business, but it can be of a very general nature. And so I would just say, just because it wasn't explicitly listed, it doesn't mean that it doesn't fit within this, this, uh, zoning resolution, in my opinion, and, and the way I read that the code is written. I, I have no further comments. Um, so with that, I, I think, uh, I'll introduce, um, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero nine, uh, for the zoning case twenty twenty dash thirty-nine, that's a C, um, for the, uh, for the application to be passed and approved.
With the conditions?
With, yeah, with the conditions stated, um, from the Board of Zoning Commission, uh, that this will not be used as a firearms training facility.
And I will second that resolution.
Is there any discussion of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero nine?
I think we've pretty much covered it.
Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes, to approve.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero nine is adopted.
Thank you, everyone.
With that, we're going to adjourn the, the public meeting. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at seven thirty-nine.